I was a friend of mine, she's going to teach at the town hall. You know, would be a part of the project. So, yeah. Yeah. I saw him, I saw him last night. He was here. Yeah. I'm like, oh, I can't have it. And, uh, yeah. I don't know. What it gets, what it gets, what it gets. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's starting to stop. It's definitely bad. It's just starting to, it's just starting to, uh, okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna go right into it.
Did you swear last time, the last appearance?
Yes, he was. I guess I'm gonna just start with this. This is similar to an exhibit that I showed last time, but it's really a new exhibit, so I guess I'd like to call it...
According to my notes, the last exhibit we had marked is A3, and this should be A4, I believe.
Okay, so it's an existing streetscape, proposed streetscape, which is exactly the same as you saw last time. And then I added the zoning tabulations for just FAR, building coverage and lot coverage on the side. What we did is, I'll just summarize really quickly, that we reduced the FAR to a variance for 1.59%, which is 159 square feet. Previously, it was, I think, 5.35%. We reduced building coverage to 166 square feet, which is 1.66%. Previously, it was just under 4. And we reduced lot coverage to 3.69, a variance request for 3.69, or 369 square feet. You know, this is all happening because the lot is exactly 10,000 square feet, where before it was 6.38. And all of this is summarized in that letter that I sent to you that's dated June 11th that I think everybody has.
So, just so we're clear on the record, so the only variances remaining right now are FAR lot coverage and building coverage?
No.
Okay.
I'd like you to just take a look at my letter from June 11th. It's like the cover page of... Go back one. I'm sorry. Oh, this always just reminds me of teaching college, looking at everybody's homework. The, you know, we came to the April 7 meeting. We have deleted two variances, the left side yard setback. See that in my point one? And then we deleted the side combined setback. So that's my point one. In point two, we reduced the building coverage variance from, I'm just gonna use footage for now, 391 square feet to 166 square feet. We reduced the lot coverage variance from 638 square feet to 369 square feet. And we reduced the FAR variance from 535 square feet to 159. And remember, this is a 10,000-square-foot lot, so it's really easy, because 559 is like 5.59.
Okay.
Now, we modified two variances, right? Like reduced them, I'm gonna say. Side yard setback on the left side, and the side yard setback above 18 feet. Okay? And I guess I would just like to go to, let's see what's on my next page. Go to my next page of that eight-and-a-half-by-eleven document.
Can you just go back one second?
Yeah.
Because in number one, it says, "deleted the following: left side yard setback variance." But then on number three, it says, "remained modified side yard setback left side."
I don't know how I did that.
Oh, good.
It sounds like magic to me. But I'm sure there's a little more to it. I'll figure it out when I get into this.
Maybe it's the additional.
It must have been the additional above here.
Okay, so side setback to 18-foot high, the maximum is 12 feet, and you're proposing 9.9 feet, correct?
9.9 is existing and proposed.
Proposed, right? So combined side yard is eliminated...
Correct.
Because you're, okay.
Because now we can, it's required to be 17.5.
Right.
It's existing at 14.9, and our proposal is 21.9. It's a pretty big improvement.
And what about the side setback above 18 feet?
The side setback above 18 feet, I'd like to show it to you in the elevation, if I can.
Okay, can you just verbally?
I really don't know what it is without looking at the elevation.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. I'm just gonna go to my sheets, which are exactly the same as your sheets. Go to your BOA 16. Now, what we did here was, our first set was BOA 1 through 10, and these new sheets that you have, yeah?
Which sheet was that numbered?
16. In the new documents. If you see a BOA 1, it's an old document. It's the last sheet. Now, I'm gonna, on the rear elevation, okay, on BOA 16, and if I'm on the left side, you can see we come up with our 12-foot required. I hit this 18-foot point, and then I go up to the, I penetrate the roof at 15.94, right? 16 is required at 32, but at 15.94 is where I penetrated the roof. So the variance request on the left side is 2.54 feet. You see that little, I don't really wanna mark this, because then I'm gonna get, it's this little 2.54 here, on the left side.
So on your page two, your revised summary attachment F, side setback above 18 feet, the maximum is 16 feet at 32. You with me? Tim?
No. Are you talking about the third variance on?
Yes.
On, okay, yes, I'm with you.
Yes, see that?
Yep.
And the proposed, it says 13.4 feet. Is that correct?
No, I don't see that.
That's on the right side.
That was, the proposed is, yeah, the proposed is 13.4, so the variance request, see the second column from the end on the right side? Is now 2.54.
Right, okay.
That's, the numbers actually work, actually. Like my math is, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
I did it one night, really. That's why I'm questioning myself.
I think you misspoke. That's why I'm trying to correct you.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So 13.4 proposed, which results in a variance request of 2.54 feet.
That's correct.
Thanks.
That's the left side. Now, there, we call it the right side, because we're saying right from the face of the house, but it's really the left side, from the rear, because I'm looking at the rear elevation right now. That's what that is, yeah?
It's still the right side of the house.
It's the right side, yeah. I'm calling it the left, because it's over here on my left. But it's just the rear of the house. Don't let it...
Depends on which way it is.
That's right, yeah. Like everything in life. So...
There must be a stair.
Okay, we got it.
Some Seinfeld-like, definitely. So now, if I'm on the right side, you can see our new building coming up at the 12-foot mark, right? We pushed our building to the 12-foot mark. Right there is the spring point where we hit the 18, right? That's my 18. And then we start cutting in so that we can get up to 16 at 32 feet. But we actually penetrate the roof at 15.63 feet. So the variance request on this side, really for that dormer, is 6.57, right? And that's, I wrote that in that little page two.
Yeah.
When I did that, I wrote corrected, because that is actually corrected. We called it 5.4 before, but we were incorrect. It's actually 6.57. It hasn't actually changed. It was just really corrected when we really got into this. So I guess I just wanna say that these two variances for side above 18 feet are really, you know, I don't know. I think it's really like that area. I guess I just did it.
You just did it.
Exhibit, I'm sorry. Like A5?
A5.
I'm sorry.
And is that BOA 16?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's hard to, you know, all you do is draw all day, so it's hard to stop. So anyway, that's what I'm saying, we corrected that variance, because it was actually incorrect before. That's that side. But you can see that our primary building has really been shifted. The dark lines that are here, the dotted dark lines, that's the previous application. And I did that just because I didn't wanna do an overlay thing, because then I figured this way you could all have it, instead of me just flipping an overlay back and forth. But that's the previous application, because here, we pushed the building. And then if I come to the side elevation, I guess I would call this the left side, you can see that we have shortened the length of the building, we have deleted the dormers, we removed the dormer that was in the front, because we thought it was, made the building look bigger in the front. And if I'm gonna now flip to my BOA 15, you can see on the right side elevation that we've reduced our building and pulled it back and eliminated those upper dormers. And on our front elevation, we really actually left everything as it was. We didn't change anything. So I'm gonna go, keep going back, I'm gonna go all the way back to my first floor plan. That's my BOA 12 sheet, and that's the one that has this sort of summary on it that I had blown up on the exhibit four. But on my BOA 12, you can see the outline of the previous building and how we pulled the building back in, and you can see the previous outline of, like, there is the deck in the back of the existing building. Right, this building, on this side, the width of our building has remained exactly as it is. I guess we could, as, you know, we were just talking about what else could we do to this, we could actually delete the front porch and save some building coverage. But I think the front porch probably really is helpful to the house. The, if I come up to my second floor, it's the same thing. We've pulled away, you know, all of this mass as we went around the building. And I think that my revised summary attachment F, which is the one that we typed up, the second page, is actually a pretty good summary of all of this, right? We took the side yard setback to 18 high. It actually is the same. Side combined, we eliminated. Side setback above 18, we reduced on the one side and actually corrected on the other side. Lot coverage we reduced, building coverage we reduced, and the FAR we reduced. If I keep going a little bit, I'd like to take you to the next page. I'll be done in like five minutes. This is a lot that's extremely undersized, right? It's really, the zoning is a 14,000-square-foot lot, or 14,500, and it's only a 10,000-square-foot lot. And it's also true that all the lots are about that in this zone, okay? I'm not trying to say that this is a peculiar situation down there. But all of those, all of this reduced, or this reduced lot area has really affected all of our coverages and affects our setbacks. And I think we have scaled it down, and instead of making a full two-story building, we really have a one-story building where we have the ability to dormer, to keep the building itself massed down. We deleted the dormers that were up on the third floor, which my owner really wanted for office space on the third floor, but we deleted them so that we could really bring the bulk and mass of the building down. So I think we've actually addressed it. The problem with lot coverage with this site is that it's got a detached garage, and the detached garage is in the rear of the property, and I have a kind of a long driveway. And that's how my lot coverage gets banged up here to 3.0, I think it's 3.69, or 369 square feet. That could be corrected a little bit. You know, we could reduce the existing kind of car-and-a-half garage. It's a sort of a 18-foot-wide garage. We could reduce it to 13 feet and pick up about that 160 square feet that were over on building coverage, and also over on FAR. I think we'd have about a 10-foot FAR variance. And also, it would reduce our lot coverage. But, I don't know, it seems to me that it's a nice place to be able to put bicycles and stuff into the garage, and maybe get at least a car into the garage at the same time. This garage isn't big enough to fit two cars. And if I make the garage smaller, I'm just gonna end up probably with my client putting a shed in later or something, or leaving the cars outside so that all the junk can go in the garage. And in a lot of ways, I kinda feel that the garage is a better location for all of this junk than having it just sitting outside, right? So I would, I think that the variance is relatively minor, and the garage is detached from the building, so it doesn't add to the building's bulk, even though it gives me the FAR that we're just about over in this case, and it pushes me over on building coverage and lot coverage. And that's everything I have for you tonight, I think. We tried really hard. We went through a whole series of push back and forth to try to pull this thing down, to get it to the point where it seemed reasonable.
Thank you. Do I have any questions for board members?
So, Tim, last time, I think a number of us had expressed some concerns about the depth of the house, in particular in relation to the house next door. And I think you said you trimmed some off the back. So just help us to understand what the depth looks like? How does it compare in relation to, I think that Rob had asked for some information about the depth of the property relative to other houses in the neighborhood. I don't know if you have that or not.
We don't have a lot of information on the neighborhood. But I will say, just looking at the neighborhood, I went back through it today, there hasn't been a lot of work in this neighborhood. Most of the Elm work has occurred on the north side of Wyoming. So when I look at the houses, there really hasn't been a lot of work done. We pulled our building back four feet, and we pulled it in on the right and left side, and we scaled the massing of the building to break it up so it wouldn't be a long kind of railroad car look like the one that's immediately to the right. That's the way we handled it. But this project done from the street looked, I'd say, really no real change to the streetscape. Even when I go back and look at the, went down the street today, I took a couple of pictures, which I can pass around if you'd like to see. I have three photos. I took one at the top, and the middle, and below. And it's, it's pretty hard to see into the depth of the lot, really.
Okay. So how does this proposed structure compare to the house next to it?
It's about eight feet shorter than the house next door. Previously, it was four feet shorter, and now it's another four feet shorter. And it's lower.
Okay, thanks.
It also isn't a straight line. It pulls in twice as we go back.
Yep, okay, thanks.
I'm talking about the right side now, when you look at the house.
When you say it's eight feet shorter, you're less in depth?
In total length, in total depth. If I was back on the house next door, okay.
I got it, so it's eight feet shorter in depth?
Than the adjacent property.
Than the house next door?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that house is the house on the right, Tim, we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Good question. Can you talk to me about the front porch? You've got sort of a gazebo, I don't know what to call it, that currently in front of...
We took that away.
So that's going away, because you have superimposed here...
Yeah, because that's the demo layer, right?
Okay.
But...
All right. But the porch, in terms of FAR, is contributing, still continuing to contribute to the FAR?
The porch isn't in FAR. It's in building coverage and lot coverage. But since it's open, it doesn't count for FAR.
Okay, so just building coverage?
Yeah. But the, we removed that, there's like a little building in front now, a little octagon building. I don't know if you saw it. We removed that building, and you can kinda see it dotted there. We removed it and put this porch on the front. The, completed, it would be the porch like that on the front of the building. It's about, it's about 16 and a half feet long and five feet deep, that's what it is.
If I could ask one more question?
Yeah.
Will this house be any taller than the other houses in the neighborhood? It does, I thought there actually has been some work in the neighborhood. When I drove through, there's two houses down.
There's a little bit, but I mean, it's not that crazy amount of work that you see on the other side.
So in terms of height, completed height, if you...
No, this is in scale to the neighborhood. Everything is, we're not raising the roof. We actually have left the existing ridge.
Okay.
And it's not taller. It's in, the house, it's in scale to the neighborhood now.
Thank you.
Given, you know, you helped us very well in terms of understanding from the previous variance to today's variance, just in terms of numbers, you're talking about 638 square feet going down to 369 on lot coverage, and similarly for building coverage and FAR. If you could just, you know, if you have that handy in terms of where is that reduction coming? You said back is being reduced by four feet. So how much square footage is that? And then you're adding in the front, so if you just, you know, tie it out, that would be helpful.
I'm gonna do it for building coverage, so I'm gonna do it on the, my BOA 12 sheet, because it's the footprint, really. So on the rear, that's the four feet going across the back. Then we come this way, it's five feet for that length. So this one, I don't know, I could tell you how big footage-wise they are, but I'd have to kinda figure it. That's what we reduced. And then on the left side, or the right side, I'm sorry, we pulled it in a foot, stepped it, then came to the old line, and then stopped it sort of about two and a half feet short before we got back to where we were. So we took out all of the space between the heavy line and the building exterior skin line. Nothing, we did nothing really, nothing to the front.
So all that accounts for the reduction from 391 to 166 for the building coverage? About 225 square feet?
Yes, that's 225 square, that's 225 square feet.
All of that, okay.
Yes, 391 to 166. And in terms of FAR, it sorta gets doubled because of the second floor, right? So the reduction gets doubled. There was a, existing on the building, back on my BOA 12 sheet, there's a little octagon entry area that's enclosed, that's enclosed. We've removed that area. It was added at some point in time, you know, it's not original. We removed that area, but then we came and put a front porch in. And I really wanted the front porch, because I wanted it to center on this gable that we did, so that the building would mass to be more like that 22-foot width, and then the side would sort of recess, as like the rendering does. That's what we're trying to do, recesses and pull that as the primary elevation.
That gets added in the building coverage too, right?
The front porch is in building coverage, yes.
Then the reduction must be more than 225 at the back end that we just described, because now that's the variation.
No, that was there before, in my, in the first scheme. So I haven't touched it, so...
One more, a couple more questions. So there's a patio on grade in addition to a wood deck? There's two sort of extensions, exterior extensions? Just a question, that's a question. Is there both a patio on grade and a wood deck?
We don't have a patio on grade.
Oh, because it looks like here...
There may be some old patio you see.
BOA 12?
Yeah. Let me just look. Show me what you see. Well, I guess I'm wrong. We changed the wood deck to a patio. That's what we did, right? We, yeah. Because I can see now we have the steps. We had a deck last time, and now we made it a patio.
Okay.
So there is no deck any longer.
Okay, because I was gonna say there is an easy way to take some of your coverage.
But there's still coverage for us.
Because this wood deck here that's shown on BOA 11 is now a patio?
Oh, no, we called it a new patio.
Then to the left, maybe that's existing site plan?
Oh, that's existing.
Okay.
It's an existing wood deck that we're turning.
Okay, so next...
We're removing the wood deck and lowering it down to be a patio.
Okay. And is the patio gonna be bigger than the deck?
The patio is actually a little smaller, because we thought the existing patio, or we thought the existing deck was too big.
Okay.
I could probably tell you how much...
I'm just looking for some feet for you to decrease some of these.
If I wanted to get more footage, it'd probably be best out of the garage, really, I think, really. If that's important to us.
Well, what's the square footage of the proposed patio in the rear?
176.
Okay.
And the existing deck is 230. Yeah, the existing deck is 230.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions from the board? Anyone in the audience who has any questions of this applicant or architect? Anyone in the audience who has any comments? I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the public portion. Board members, what do you think?
Let me just remind the board that there's an FAR variance here that requires five affirmative votes. So my recommendation would be to take two separate votes, one for the FAR variance and one for the balance of the bulk variances.
Thank you. I can speak to my opinion. Thank you to the applicants for listening to what our requests were, our concerns. I think you gave the application, you know, a decent haircut, reducing the bulk, you know... I think you gave the application, you know, a decent haircut, reducing the bulk, you know, making appropriate revisions. And I appreciate the revised application. I also, you know, weighed your testimony and what you're saying about reducing the garage, you know, shed versus not. I think based on its location, where it is, and, you know, to the testimony of, you know, the opportunity for shelter it provides for those materials, I wouldn't advise reducing it in size, but obviously would be curious how my fellow board members feel. So I like the application as it's been revised.
Yeah, I agree. I feel like you've taken on board a lot of the stuff that was said. When I look at the drawings now and I look at the sizing on some of the things that remain, I don't feel like they can be squeezed much more. So I think you've done a good job taking things into account. I did have one quick question. Has anything been said to the next door neighbors? Have you done anything to talk to the neighbors about what's going on? And I'm particularly sensitive to this because 57 is going to have things going on on both sides of them.
We have a quick chat with neighbors on both sides, and 10,000 activity is coming. And the reason why we do that?
Have you done that, or are you planning to?
We did that, we did that.
Okay, did you show them plans?
No, I did not. But we detailed that, you know, why we do that, you know, I do, it'll be coming.
57 is to the left?
Yeah, as you think, yes.
And then 59?
It's on later in the...
It's these guys.
Yeah, it's a couple houses, yeah.
Those people too.
I could go on, I just agree with my fellow board members here in terms of the comments that were, you know, rendered, have been taken into account. And I'd just add that based on the testimony that this is a 10,000-square-feet property versus a 14 and a half, which is for the zone, seems that, that would seem to be a hardship. Although you did mention that it's not peculiar to this property, it's probably more widespread, but still, it is lower than what's in the zone, and it's significantly lower. And I think the numbers which are at this point are in variance clearly, but a much lower number. But if you kind of extrapolate that for what could have been, had the property been right-sized for the zone, most of these would probably disappear. So I would be supportive of the application based on the revised numbers.
I'm going to agree with everything my colleagues have said. So far, this is a very skinny lot, and the houses are really close together. So I appreciate that you have been modest in your revised proposal. So I would be in favor of this application.
Yeah, look, I do appreciate the changes that were made. I still am a little bit concerned about the depth of the house, and it's not, this property's owner's fault that the next door is also, goes pretty far back. I'm a little worried about what would happen in this neighborhood. But, you know, where you'd get some tunnel-like view down the sides of the houses. I do appreciate the changes that were made to the plans that would at least not make it kind of like a block wall going back. But it is, it is a concern to me. I, you know, I think I could support it, but I'm a little bit troubled by that.
Does someone want to make a motion? Oh, yeah, first, let's start with the FAR. Would someone like to make a motion?
Again, this requires five affirmative votes, seven, and who is, is there anyone not eligible?
Everyone will vote except for Stephen.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be our seven.
I'll move to approve the FAR variance. Do we have a second? Great.
Shandra Horejani?
Yes.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
Beth Zoll?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Glatte?
Yes.
Okay, and then for the remaining variances? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Shandra Horejani?
Yes.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
Beth Zoll?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Glatte?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have, right around the corner, calendar 4035-25, and the property location is 59 Elm Street. Yeah, you know, we're going to, we're going to take a one-minute or two-minute break.
Are you all able to see this, or should we bring it a little bit closer to you?
I think everyone can see it.
Okay.
I just heard a bunch of squeaks. I have one of those. No, no, we couldn't afford the quasar, it's definitely a magnet. Over West Orange, we had more options. We went to Corvettes, and we got what we got.
Corvettes, we were a two-guys group.
Two guys, oh, that's big time. That was field trip time. Yeah, two guys is great. Lately, no.
Got to go.
Really?
Got to go.
Like, new thing?
Just got to go. Before it all disappears.
Spencer's still going on there?
We got to go, just to say you went there.
What was the name of the pizza place right next door?
There was one. KB Toys.
Yeah, KB Toy and Hobby. That's where I got my Ask His Rockets.
Yeah, Ask His Rockets, you do that too?
Damn right.
All right, are we back up? Yeah. All right, everyone on the board, good to start? Oh, no, did that just go off? It just... Okay.
You'll need to log in and make sure that every once in a while, you'll move the track.
That's a nice plan, Dan.
Hold on, hold on. You need like four caffra permits.
Putting in a small pool.
Who's doing the ocean for you?
We're ready to start with you?
Yeah, we're set.
Awesome, well, good evening, and thank you very much for your time. My name's Gene Super, this is my wife, Irina, and we lived at 59th Street since, basically, our kids, right before they started kindergarten. And they just graduated from fifth grade in Washington School. And this community has really felt like, it feels like home for us. We love our house and our neighborhood, and we want to stay here long-term. And we're here tonight because we want to ask for a modest update and in order to support how our family is really growing and evolving. We have just three bedrooms, and our family has grown to five people since Irina's widow aunt now lives with us. Both Irina and I work from home, full-time, and right now she's working out of mudroom. And I have a desk set up on our front porch. And we're, true story. So we're requesting a modest addition to create space for the proper office and an extra bedroom. We've kept the design respectful to the home's original character, which we actually really appreciate it. We're actually, it turns out, we're the second family that owned this house. It was built in 1925, and it's been in the original family since that time. So we've spoken to our immediate neighbors, and everyone we've talked to is supportive of this small extension. And we're actually also in speaking with our architect, reducing the lot coverage and using permeable materials that Daniel's going to talk about to help manage runoff. So we hope to continue growing here as a family, and really appreciate your consideration here tonight.
Okay, Mr. Super, so what we're going to do, is you start giving some testimony after your introduction without being sworn. So anyone, you going to testify tonight too, maybe? Maybe, all right, you're all in. Raise your right hand. Do you saw me swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight, or have given tonight to this point?
Yes.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, so one at a time, state your name and address.
Irena Super, 59 Elm Street, over in...
Yevgeny Gene Super, 59 Elm Street, same location.
Daniel Dubinette, architect, and yes, I do.
Just, okay, thank you.
Tell the truth, I swear.
All right. Okay, so who's, are you going to be testifying to? So let's first get your credentials. Give us your affiliation, areas of expertise and licenses in the field of architecture.
Great, well, I've been practicing since 2001, so that's good 24 years residential architecture, primarily in Short Hills and the surrounding neighborhoods. I've appeared before this board numerous times, and my license is current and still in good standing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Qualifications have been accepted.
Thank you. So like, we got an opportunity to say that I think it's a modest addition. What we're planning on doing is adding six feet to the front of the home. And so I'll take you through the plans, but the interesting thing is we do not need a front yard setback variance because the other homes are, even as a result of this, still going to be a little bit closer to the street than us. And then again, the existing architectural style of this home in the 1920s, looks like a one-and-a-half-story style home, we're going to, I use that as inspiration, we're going to pull almost the same aesthetic character and feel that you see today, just six feet out. We are located in R5 Zone, and like the previous application, they're all slightly undersized lots. We're the shaded area at 59. We're actually 7,500 square feet lot size, where the 14,500 is the minimum required. Also, 75 feet is the minimum width, where it's 50 feet, so 25 feet efficient in width. And there are four variances associated with this application. Side yard setback, but on the left side, which is interesting for us because on the left side, well, the home that would be affected by us is facing Wyoming, and so there's about 150 feet from our left side to the property on Wyoming. So that's the good news. On the right side, we've got open ample space. We do not need a variance for the right side of the property. You can see from the survey, we're talking about the side, it's this dotted line that is vertical on the property. So a third of the house is already in violation. So it's an existing non-conformity that we're looking to expand for the side yard setback. The other variances, building coverage, lot coverage, and FAR, and I'll touch upon those in a moment. I'd just like to show you the plans really quickly. So the ask is to expand the family room six feet towards the front, to relocate the front porch, so we maintain that because they love that space, create a small foyer, mudroom, vestibule, so about four feet, four and a half feet to just pull the door a little bit from the staircase, and give Irina a small office on the first floor. That's the extent of the first floor addition. The second floor, well, in addition to adding, we have these, well, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house. I guess the bedrooms didn't have any closets, so we're looking to steal some space to add the closets in the back bedrooms. Take the bedroom number three, modify it so we can get a hallway that'll take us to the primary bedroom. Our primary bedroom, although it looks big in plan, I think because the other rooms are small, it's 13 and a half by 13 and a half, so modest size, but still nice size bedroom. And then the office to the left will also function as their closet. So it won't be like the ideal, but it was great for them. We didn't need certainly a closet that big, so they're going to have a little desk in the front window, and they'll share a closet in the bathroom that was existing. So that's the extent of the project, and then I'll just show you architecturally how it kind of comes together. I think more exciting than that is maybe looking at, so these are pictures, photographs, that you do have of the existing front of the house. So we see the front porch, and we have these two gables that look like one and a half stories. And we proposed something similar. Again, we're just going to come six feet forward, so we're matching the roof lines, the style, the vernacular that exists. So very comfortable, it'll sit very comfortably on the lot. So one of the things, let me talk about lot coverage. So one of the things that we were, existing non-conforming lot coverage, we were pretty big. Existing is 3,626, and we've made a 300, as a result of all this, we still made a 300-square-foot reduction in our lot coverage, and we did that by removing, by removing the front walkway, which, we actually have two of them. We have one on the left side, sorry, it's very faint, one on the left side that most people take when they park on the street. One on the left side that most people take when they park on the street, they'll travel up this walkway. They don't need this one, so we decided, okay, we can eliminate the stairs and the front walkway, save some lot coverage. And then since they do not use the garage to park a car that often, so we eliminated all that blacktop and we're going to introduce a permeable, it's not even a paver, it's a permeable hexagon plastic device that, I spoke to Martha, she, they love this material. I meant to get some cooler images of it, but it's basically like a black mesh, honeycomb mesh, that you could infill it with soil and you could go grass and drive on it. So that'll be if and when we ever need to access the garage for a car, you could. But in the meantime, we'll get back the appropriate coverage. We'll pick up some backyard space, so it'll think it'd be a positive for them and for the neighbors and certainly for our variance application. Building coverage, again, an existing non-conforming situation. Currently, the house is at 1,578 square feet of building coverage. Proposed, we're gonna increase it by 187 square feet of building coverage. Brings us to 23.3%. Allowed is 18%, 1,350. So at the end of the day, the property will be up 400 square feet over what's allowed. But one of the things we try to do on building coverage and all the other variances, as a matter of fact, is try to keep it within the R6 criteria as a guide for us. So we're at 23.3% and the R6 is 23%, so I felt like, well, that's a reasonable place to be. And as a result of the building coverage, 125 square feet is the front porch. So again, that's to promote the aesthetic character, obviously the, all the benefits of having a front porch, you know, the neighborhood security and temporary offices up there. Then we get to FAR. That one is, proposed is 2,681, maximum allowed is 2,250. And that's at 30%. We're seeking 35.7%. And then the R6 is 35%, so we felt comfortable kind of using the R6 as our guide. And really quickly, I'd like to just show you because I think it's what makes this property unique and special. And I feel like the variance is, certainly the property can handle the additional FAR and all the other variances that go with it, specifically because of how it's sited. So again, three of the adjoining neighbors all face Wyoming, so their properties were very well hidden from them. And because we haven't encroached any further on the neighbor on Elm, I feel like that's a positive. And so a little bit of the streetscape, so we'll fit. I mean, I think at the end of it, you, no one will really notice like what happened here. And then.
Hey Dana, are these?
Yes, sir.
Are these all?
No, this is a new slide.
So why don't we, is this one, is this one sheet? Or is this multiple sheets?
There's two sheets attached to this.
Okay, so, well, I thought that.
You have this one.
Right.
I did colorize it a little bit.
Why don't we?
Yeah.
Scroll down, please. Anything that is not in the application packet?
Okay.
Let's mark.
Okay.
Okay, so is it solely comprised of this photo board?
Yeah, photo boards of.
We're gonna call it A1. Photo board of four photographs. And did you take those photographs?
Three of those I took, one is a Zillow image.
Okay. The one, the three that you took, when did you take them?
Last week.
Okay, and they accurately depict the conditions that you saw with your own two eyes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the bottom right picture, this is from the, standing at Wyoming looking down Elm. And you can't see the Super's house at all, it's very well screened. So again, no negative impact to the neighbor, neighborhood, promotes update to modernize the house. I didn't see any.
Why don't you, can you show on the bottom right hand photo where the house is sited? Approximately?
I wish I could.
Since you can't see it?
It's probably back.
To show some relevancy to the photo?
Back at this line. Somewhere back in there. Oh, sorry, this black line, I think if it was to be seen, it'd be back here. Yeah, if I look at. Behind the, actually, yeah, right, 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 right at this, where these mature trees, these arborvitae, and I think that's the beginning of the front of the house, yeah. So just lovely things I could say about the addition. Update and modernize the home, I think it will certainly enhance the streetscape and not take away. We get to reduce lot coverage. It already has mature every green screening. The front yard setback will still be beyond the average, so being very sensitive to the neighbors. And that, like again, we were sensitive to design to the criteria of R6, so we feel like the house and the property could handle the additional massing. And we'll change the height, so it's currently 32 feet to the peak, it'll stay 32 feet. And that's our application.
Any questions on the board?
Dan, so you mentioned that the house is gonna come out about six feet closer to the curb?
Yes.
And that the average in the neighborhood is, has a smaller setback. The house next to it, to the right, which is probably about to get construction and stereo, how does that, how does the setback compare to that house?
The 57 is at 32.8, so we're gonna be at 33.1. So we'll still be, well, farther back, but not much.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Just in the current formation of the house, how many bedrooms and baths?
Thank you. Upstairs, there's three bedrooms, two baths. Yeah, so then we'll have four bedrooms, two baths.
Okay, yeah, all right, great, thank you.
Just following up on Gary's, how did you arrive at the setbacks for the, down the block?
We did a couple things. One, we take, we stand at the curb with a laser. And then I walk, you know, I walk each house at the curb and then I subtract the right-of-way line from that, so make this be the average.
Yeah, someone's on that. Doesn't a surveyor usually do that?
Surveyors can't do that.
I mean, are you allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Do this? Thank you.
Sounds like a spaceship.
When you measure to the curb line though, we're looking for boundary though, right?
Yeah, so then there's the right-of-way line, so everybody has the same right-of-way line. So once I get this house as a, from the curb, once I establish like the dimension from.
Right.
59, then I make the subtraction, so I do the same deduction for everybody.
So you have a plus minus distance in that?
Within inches, yeah.
Okay.
Not feet, for sure.
So.
Hi.
Before proceeding forward, we had lengthy conversation with Steven and Tan, the neighbors from 57. We're close. We help each other during hurricanes and power outage, et cetera. So I had probably, you know, a 30-minute-plus conversation with Steven to make sure that, and we roped off the area, just, he asked me questions. I basically detailed everything. I offered to show the plans to him and ask, is there any concerns whatsoever? His answer was no, so.
And that's a neighbor, it's the 57?
57, yes.
That's your guy, David.
Yeah, it's obvious, you know, it's really important to us to make sure that we continue to stay good neighbors.
We also talked to the neighbors on, the two neighbors on Wyoming, and then the neighbors across the street from us as well. And Lee, who was here earlier, because he's on the other side of 57.
Any other questions?
Quickly, could you tell me a little bit more about the driveway, the mesh that's going to go on the driveway? And does that, if, with you using the substances, that take it out of building coverage or FAR, any of the coverages that you're getting various?
That reduced our lot coverage.
It reduced the lot coverage by making it this mesh?
Yes.
Do you have a photograph of it?
I would have, you know, before I came, I went online, but what I do have is this black and white image. I could probably, go on my search, it's probably still there. But yeah, it's a honeycomb mesh, it's really cool. It's a black honeycomb mesh that's about an inch tall. And then you could fill it in with topsoil and grow grass.
Okay, how is it affixed to the ground? What keeps it from?
It's just set, it sits right on the ground.
It sits on the ground, it doesn't move, and you won't slide off if there's like a big rainstorm?
I mean, I don't think, I think if you use it a lot, you probably kill the grass and then you'd see the mesh. So I think it's more of a, it's not a everyday, let's use it every day item.
And also, one of the things that's like where, on the slope, obviously, so when there is significant rainfall, there is water that runs both down Elm Street but also over the backyard. So a big thing for us in doing this and all the consideration was, you know, how do we absorb a little bit more of this water? Already planted, you know, more than 15 trees on the property. And we thought, you know, we're kind of inspired, if you've seen like the, what is it called? When there's kind of like the bricks with, some driveways, you know, have, you know, like either artificial turf in between the tracks or like the crisscross pavers. So we're trying to do something like that, but maybe a little bit more, you know, effective and innovative. So that's how this idea came about. So we're really trying to make a little bit more positive impact when all this, you know, is happening. And right now, it's obviously just, you know, asphalt or blacktop, whatever it is, and it just runs down, you know, 57, 55 and down the street. Hopefully, some of this will absorb.
Thanks for the testimony about the home is from 1925, I think you said. I believe you're not in the Wyoming Historic District. But when you, I guess, extend it forward, then it'll be those front windows and the look that will be replaced. But is the, you know, it's a little bit hard to tell and obviously the renderings look, you know, more modern. Will the intention be to sort of keep it, I don't know if you're keeping it the same colors or not, but just to keep it looking similar to the, you know, the look and feel today?
Yeah, I think the only thing that we've lost was the exposed chimney from the front. Otherwise, the proportions in character stay. And that's why the front porch was also a very important element to keep.
How do you maintain the honeycomb situation?
I don't think you do.
Because I know you've, I mean, just, like, if it's like grass pave, I mean, we've seen some really poorly maintained grass pave around town, so, like, can you mow it or?
Yes, you're supposed to, yeah. I think that's how you maintain it. I think if you use it a lot, then you'll kill the grass and you'll see the honeycomb, so. I don't think it's expected to be an active driveway. And so, for sure, for sure, I don't know how often you've ever pulled a car, I don't think they pull a car back there once.
Yeah, so I was gonna also ask then, how often are, like, do you not keep the car parked in the garage?
No, I parked a Mini in there one time that I changed the oil during a storm.
Yeah, they never, yeah, so I think it was, yes, it could be that or it could be maybe some tire tracks. But again, I know when I showed this to, because I didn't even know if it was an allowable substitution. And when I showed it to Martha, she loved it. She thought, she, you know, she'd really like that product.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm gonna focus on that a little bit because my thought is you're on a slope and I'm worried about that mesh, like, sliding into your neighbor.
Oh, no, there's no like significant slope to the right.
There are pavers like on the sides of the driveway, so from my understanding is that mesh is gonna be a bit lower than those. So it gets kind of sandwiched in between the driveways and then the grass gets planted inside. So it can't like slide down because it can't go past this side.
It's plastic. Yeah, I don't know, but I, certainly I never used it before and I presented it to Martha because I didn't know if you could get a credit for such a thing. So I don't have experience with it, but she said that she loved it, so we went with it. I wouldn't, yeah.
And our intent, so there's, on both sides of the driveway, there are the pavers that go up about four inches. So our intent is actually to keep those pavers. So even if there is like a lot of water, right, then my understanding, and like early on, until the grass has an opportunity to grow in, those pavers are what's going to prevent anything, you know, kind of sliding away. So they will stabilize the, unless I misunderstood something.
I've never installed it, I didn't even go deep dive like you're going into, how do you install it and stabilize it? I don't know, but that would be, I guess, a means and method, kind of like.
I don't know if the manufacturer would give you some advice or not, to say we should secure this with like a rail, railroad tires.
Yeah, I'm sure there's probably stakes.
Like some, a stake.
I'm sure there's stakes that, you know, anchor to the ground. Again, I don't know the means and methods.
Right, right, like a sunken cement or something underneath, just to, just for extra security that it wouldn't slide off in some sort of one of those bad storms like we had this afternoon.
Have you given any thought to if the property changes ownership and then someone is using that garage on a regular basis?
No, other than the next sensitive thing would be, okay, you can install like just where the tires would go. And we looked at that, but there's like this little curve to the, to get in, it's not a straight shot, so. I was like, well, that will, you know, you had to like be super, super careful, it's not a straight shot. You see the curve to it, so I could do tire tracks here, but, you know, it'd be like, that would be a game. It wouldn't work out well, so I figured let's just cover this whole area with this material. I mean, I think the expectation, some people do, some people do pull them, but most people don't, but, no, I hadn't thought of that.
Any other questions?
This is probably stating the obvious, but the reason you're going to smash is so that you can not add to your coverage.
I just pushed them to say, look, let's get back, we're gonna ask, 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 how do we get back? So obviously, the walkway was a nice idea, this was like a great idea.
Yeah, it's a good compromise, as long as it stays. Would, let me ask my attorney, would, some of they sell the house 25 years from now, could the new owner pave that over without a variance? Would they have to come to us? Would they even know they need a variance?
That's up to the board. In other words, if the board stated hypothetically that they were granting a variance for lot coverage based in large part due to the testimony and the exhibit depicting this rubberized mesh that allows grass to grow, based on the testimony that the area will be used infrequently, that if, that the board could impose a condition that should the property change hands and ownership, that as to the lot coverage variance, that they'd have to return to the board and, you know, for an explanation as if they're gonna change the duration of the usage of that area.
It would be very, very hard.
Totally unenforceable.
Could I just ask?
I just answer, I'm here to answer the questions.
Are you adding any lot coverage? Is there any additional lot coverage?
Yeah, with the addition of the front.
Okay.
No, we've reduced it a total of 297 square feet.
Okay.
From what existed. But obviously, I'm taking the credit for the driveway, I'm taking a credit for the front walkway.
Okay.
Sorry, but I'm zooming, I'm going down a rabbit hole on this one. What is the lifetime of that, of the? What is the lifetime of that, of the plastic mesh?
I don't, I didn't do much.
I know, that's why I'm asking. Does the manufacturer have information about the lifetime of it?
I could do some homework for you, but again, all I did was say to Martha, would this work? Do you like it? She said, I love it, and so here I am, but I, I didn't go further than that.
And the reason you don't just do grass is?
That's a good question.
You wouldn't be able to drive on it?
Right, right, wouldn't be able to drive on it, but I'm not sure how much you can be able to drive on it.
It depends on.
I think it's rated, I mean, it's definitely an approved.
It's not, it's all hearsay.
Yeah, it's definitely an approved surface for vehicles. So obviously, there's gotta be a way to construct it that it doesn't move around, it's not temporary device, so. I'm not sure how to ease your worries about it, other than, you know, install as per manufacturer's guidelines. But to your point, if someone wanted to increase impervious coverage, they'd have to ask, but then you'd have a hard time saying, you need access.
I mean, just, just bear with me a second. Your, your detail shows how the, this thing is installed.
Yes.
All right, so it's installed over a compacted soil, and then probably six inches of, eight inches of stone. So it's probably knocked down there, three-quarter inch of everything else. I mean, this is a pretty substantial thing, that's why you're able to drive a car on it. So your detail does indicate how it's installed, and it's pretty substantial.
Thank you. Now, he's, he's allowed to make his comments as a board member. Couple of questions. How many square feet is comprised of this mesh material?
Knew you were gonna ask me that, okay, but I wasn't ready for you, I could tell you that in a minute. Three-seventy-three square feet.
Okay. And. It is intended to be used, or intended to have vehicles go over it, correct?
Yes, if needed.
When you say if needed?
Well, it's designed for vehicles, so yes.
And the car, the garage can house at most one vehicle?
Yes.
Is it, what are the dimensions of the garage?
Twenty-three. Fifteen. Yes, about three-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet.
That's big. So it has the ability to have two cars? No?
No.
You can fit two cars in there?
One nice, not two.
Okay.
This product is, sorry, I'm just gonna ask a question, is that okay, Rob, if I ask a question? Okay, I don't know if you were in mid-sentence, I don't wanna cut you off.
I'm just reading, I'm sorry.
You're thinking, okay. I mean, this product is, like, has a patent, and is, is being sold, and is, it has installations, right? It's not like a brand new, we're, we're trying something out, sold at Trupps Marketplace.
Right, now, this is, yeah, it's approved for vehicular access and driveway and parking.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, I'm seeing it's got load, it's got, you know, fifty-eight thousand pounds per square feet, you know, the honeycomb cell, like, it, it seems like the technology has gotta be there, and the fact that it gets, it gets embedded, there's soil in it, and then sod planted on it. It's not just like laying on top of the grass and waiting for the, the grass to grow in. It sounds like you, you'll have to tear up the asphalt and actually plant it, essentially.
Right.
Okay.
So, so, so one of, the reason I was just pausing there is that, you know, the board could simply consider a variance for an additional, what was it, three-hundred-and-some-odd square feet of impervious coverage, but grant it, based on the representation of the applicant, that they're gonna install this, this honeycomb system, right? Or you could, and/or you could impose a condition that says that you'll continue to have it installed for the, its lifetime, per the manufacturer's recommendation, that when it exceeds its useful life, et cetera, that you'll replace it. Another way to do it.
First of all, any other questions from board members?
So this was the three-seventy-three square feet, right?
Yes.
And then your application, basically, the lot coverage is up by two-ninety-seven, so where's the difference seventy-six?
No, we reduced it to two-ninety-seven. Reduction from existing to proposed is less.
So this three-seventy-three counts towards that reduction?
Yes.
So where is the difference between two-ninety-seven and the three-seventy?
Oh, it's all over the place, it's, because we did an addition to the front, you know, all, this, this box is basically new, right? So this counts as building coverage and lot coverage, we had to account for this, but then we had to subtract out that. So let me see if I have a table here. Yes, this is our, this is our table of what is existing to propose, and we kind of, so exactly where it is, if, we'd have to backtrack. But the garage stays the same, AC unit stayed the same. So it's in, it's, it's part of the overall.
So I'm seeing through line by line, it's sort of small changes in each of those line items, which is what is adding up to that difference?
Yes. So if we add back in the three.
Did we say three-seventy, I thought?
Three-seventy-three.
Three-seventy-three, we, we come out to impervious coverage of three-thousand-seven-two.
Forty-nine point three.
Thank you. And if we wanted to ask for the variance for the.
Right, you can ask for the variance for the differential, but again, mitigating condition would be that the applicant's representative, that they're gonna install this paver, paver system. The other thing to keep in mind, just in response to Stephen's point, which is a good one, is that sometimes we impose conditions on approvals of variances, because obviously, first thing you're trying to do is you're trying to mitigate any potential detrimental impact for granting the variance, that's number one. Number two is, you have plenty of circumstances where you impose conditions, and one of the reasons why you want to impose a condition is that you're concerned about neighborhood impact. And guess what? If there is an impact, if the neighbor all of a sudden has a problem, for example, with runoff, and they're like, what's going on with my neighbor? And, you know, this is twenty years from now, and they look up the resolutions, like, oh, wait a second, they were supposed to maintain this area, and they didn't. And then that gives them, you know, in essence, some good leverage to, to seek an improvement, to make things better for the neighborhood, which is what the goal is of the condition, or a goal of the condition, so, anyway.
Down the rabbit hole again. Are you gonna need a special contractor to put this in? I mean, not that, not that I've looked at the website or anything, just wondering if you need a special contractor? And drainage and all of that, to make sure that it's, and will our team, the engineers and the drainage people all have a say-so in this?
Well, it'll definitely go to engineering for their review, to determine if they want a grading permit.
Right, or drainage issues, to make sure that this, because it is relatively new materials for our township.
I think they're probably gonna look at ground disturbance more so than.
Drainage, I don't know, kind of soil or anything. So, will you need a, will you need a special contractor for this, construction of this permeability?
I think you would need someone who's got some experience, for sure, who's done this before.
You have done it before.
I have not.
Oh, you have not, okay.
You would wanna hire someone who's done it before.
Is it paved now?
It is paved now.
And there is, there is a drain, which we intend to keep, that is within, I would say, about ten feet from the garage, takes the runoff water onto the street.
And that's gonna stay?
Yeah, that is going to stay, yes. Quite helpful to us.
Dan, switching tax, I see you're also looking for a floor area ratio variance?
We are.
Obviously, one of the attachments was your tax map? Was that one of your attachments in your thing, or do we have?
Well, yeah, you have to have a tax map, yeah. The two-hundred, yeah.
Yeah, but it's taken from the tax map, right?
Yeah.
That's the engineer provides that.
Yeah. But it just, it shows that this lot is one of the smallest ones in the block, right? That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, absolutely, it is. I think there's one more smaller at the far end of the, I don't even know if it was listed, but.
At the bottom end, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the northeast corner of the block has a couple of small lots, we've worked with those before. But this is a very small lot, so that would explain why, with a modest addition, you're looking for a floor area ratio variance.
And the hardship of the detached garage being FAR building coverage.
Correct.
The long drive to get there, yes.
Correct.
Any more questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? I'm gonna close the public portion, because I don't see or hear anyone. So can I get some comments from board members?
Let me just remind everyone, just like the last application, that it is an FAR variance, and so we'll be treating that separately, and that requires five affirmative votes. Of seven.
I'll go first, Jessica. I like the fact that you're doing it in the front, that's where you've got the room. I did see your desk when I went by. Yeah, it's in the photo. I, I think that we should do this with a condition that this, that the piece of the driveway is being, that the piece of the driveway that is currently impermeable, when it's, that it be removed and replaced with a, a permeable type of substitute, and that it remain a permeable space going forward. I don't know about restricting it to the same technology is, is the right answer, because, you know, whenever this wears out, and all our driveways wear out, whatever it is, at that point, there may be a better product around, this might not be available anymore. There's all sorts of stuff like that, for reasons not to want it to be restricted to the particular product. But keeping it as permeable space, I think, is the right way to go on it.
Sure, I can go. You know, I think I, I really appreciate, thank you for including the R-six zone. I think that was actually probably the most helpful part of reviewing the application for me, because the lot size, although in R-five, really, it's helpful to see how it speaks, you know, if it were to be in an R-six zone, which is, you know, sort of the adjacent zone, just downhill. So that really helped me just sort of put it into context. And, yeah, I think, you know, asking for the, you know, the, expanding the existing non-conforming, you know, side yard setback is, is what you're, you know, is, is acceptable, I guess, is acceptable as things, something can be in my mind. So, yeah, I, I like the application.
I'll go next, that's okay. The reason I mentioned floor area ratio is because we historically, well, not historically, but we are in the, not in the habit of granting it without thinking about it, because it really impacts the neighborhood moving forward. This is the second one that we've had, in Wyoming, actually, where the, the lots are so small that whatever change you make dramatically impacts what we consider, I believe, that what I consider, a dramatic impact on the floor area ratio. In this case, it looks to be what you're doing is rather modest, but again, because you are in such a small lot, the impacts are great as far as coverage, and especially floor area. That being said, I think it's actually tastefully done and designed. I could be supportive of the floor area ratio variance in the entire application.
I agree with the comments of my colleagues, I'm, I'm not going to go any further, so thanks.
Nothing further to add, I'll agree with that.
I met the homeowner this afternoon, and I got my eyes, gonna say, I love your neighborhood, I think you've done a great job in modifying this property to meet the homeowner's needs, in a tasteful way that maintains the property itself and the historic relevance of it, and also the neighborhood, so kudos to you, and kudos to you coming up. I actually think this is a cool idea, to maintain, to get away with some coverage, and still be able to use that part of your property for your car. Thank you for going down the rabbit hole with me, and maintaining it. There are, in the website, there are a lot of instructions about how to install it properly, and I'm sure your contractor will consult that. I like the idea of having the condition of maintaining this space as a permeable space in perpetuity to maintain the drainage there in that neighborhood. So I would be in favor of this application with that condition.
So, so I agree with my colleagues. I'll say, when I first saw the ask for a five-point-seven percent variance, you know, for floor area ratio, you know, especially given that we were just dealing with a similar ask, you know, originally for a house on this street, I was like, mm. But I think when you go over to the house, and you see what, you know, where the, you know, the increased square footage is coming from, it, it's really more about a number and a percentage than it is about overmassing, where, you know, I'm concerned that this is gonna affect the character of the neighborhood. And then, as Joe said, if you, you know, then also factor in that this is like an extremely, extremely undersized lot for the neighborhood, you know, it's kind of the perfect storm for why you would be coming before us, you know, to ask for that, you know, the extent of that, you know, variance. I do have some issues with the proposal, I, I wanna call it grass pave, but I know that it's not, whatever it's called. We have, we have approved, you know, these, these kind of surfaces in the, in the past, obviously not this exact one, if Martha is saying that it's, you know, brand new and she loves it. But, you know, I mean, you can drive around town, and they look, they, they don't look so great. So I do think that if we are going to approve this, it would be important to kind of craft the motion in a way that, you know, that this has to be maintained. Rob, help me out here with what, what else we could.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna help out here.
Thank you.
So, you know, the one thing that you don't wanna do, and the struggle with these proposals that are certainly well-intentioned always, and they do what you want them to do, which is to reduce impervious coverage. But what you don't wanna have happen is all of a sudden have applications coming in for the next five and ten, to ten years, where you have a detached garage, and everyone wants to use this material for the entirety of their driveway. And it's not a fifteen-foot wide, I thought you said fifteen-foot long, that was my mistake, fifteen-foot wide garage, but it has a three- or four-car garage. And now you, you know, you have this material that you're, you know, potentially setting a precedent, even though each application stands on its own. So I think here, you have some unique circumstances. You have only three-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet, it's towards the rear. You have David's condition that it always maintained to be a. You have David's condition that it always maintained to be a permeable space in the future, and you have representations of the applicant for a one-car garage that it's used incredibly infrequently. So I think that all those items together that would be included in the resolution could certainly support a variance grant if you were so inclined to do so, with those comments slash conditions.
Really good point.
Excellent.
Okay, well, with that being said, let's start with the FAR. And would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the FAR component of the application.
I'll second.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Sean Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
Beth Zoll?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes. Okay, would someone like to make a motion, but with some of the conditions that we have discussed for the remaining variances, but, you know, in particular with the lot coverage variance and this material that's being used, someone want to take a go at it?
Motion to approve all the other variances other than the FAR? With the conditions, with the conditions that we just talked about.
The ones that wrong, you're right.
The ones that were stated on the record just moments ago.
As stated in the record moments ago.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Sean Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
Beth Zoll?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Going to keep that desk?
Yeah, I'm going to, let me just hang on one second, let me just make an announcement. Okay, so the, the next application is calendar 4036-25. The location, property location is 45 Wordsworth Road. We have two board members who are going to be recusing for this, Joe Caulfield and Beth Zoll. Okay, you guys can go.
Oh, you're not recusing? I thought you were recusing.
What?
You're not within 20 feet. You're not within 20 feet.
It's not a, it's not a, yeah.
You're not within 20. Then why are you recusing? Oh, I thought you were recusing.
No.
Okay, I might got that wrong then, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know. I know, I know. It is. Yeah, it's been, it's been a complication. I don't think it's fine, you know? Yeah, that was the.
Oh, no, no, no. Well.
The only time that we use, the only time that we use is for emergency vehicles, I remember.
That was the worst decision ever, you know? Yeah. You all set? Okay, okay. Okay, we're going to get started. You can proceed. So wait, first, should we, who, do we want to swear?
Hold on, just give me a second.
Hang on.
Okay, so who do we have here? We're not going to swear yet. Okay? You're the architect, okay. And everyone intends to testify on some level, maybe. Can everyone raise their right hand? You saw me, you saw me swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, one, one at a time, name and address, please.
Raquel Tepurna, 45 Wordsworth.
Thank you. So are we starting with, you guys just giving a little introduction?
Yeah, we'll give an introduction. So, thank you all for being here, I appreciate your service as we need. My name's Raquel, we've lived in short homes for 10, 11, 12 years in a single house. When we started and bought the house, we had two kids. We since have a third and have a need to expand to, it's a three-bedroom right now, and we really could use another bedroom so my five-year-old can have his own room and not stay in my bed for another five years. So that's why we're, we're looking for an addition. I mean, he's a lovely child, but.
That'll be in the record, by the way, when he looks at it 20 years from now.
So we're looking to build over the garage and for that extra bedroom. And I, I mean, we pulled down a wall in the kitchen, but for the most part, it's just this, this one area, we're trying to keep really tight with, with what we want to do. I have spoken to my neighbors who live on that side where we're building, because right now we don't have any windows. Our bedroom is, is above the garage right now, or like to the side, and we have no windows there. So when we're, when we're building, we intentionally did not put windows there because there isn't a lot of space, and I talked to my neighbor, and that was their only concern, just as long as we're not looking at each other's bedroom, they were comfortable. So we have spoken to many of our neighbors, they're all fine with it, I think I was just concerned with your one right next.
We, we need to get your qualifications.
If you're going to testify, okay, so why don't you provide your affiliation, areas of expertise in licensing in the field of engineer, of architecture, excuse me?
Okay, well, I'm a registered architect in New York, New Jersey, Florida, and I'm originally from Columbia, from the country of Columbia as well. I do have a lot of experience in residential, commercial, and healthcare projects. Been working since 2022 in the, in the States, usually in New York State, now like we are like working five or six years ago in, in the state of Jersey as well.
And your license in New Jersey is in good standing?
Yes, all of them, my license is in good standing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you can, you can proceed.
Okay, so the whole variance is, the whole house complies with all the zoning requirements. The only thing is that the combined side yard is, is an existing, that is not a, is in not compliance, and the whole idea is we're going to raise the second floor, we're going to extend the house, I'm going to show you with the project. We just want to bring the, pretty much the existing walls up to the second floor in the, in the garage area. So, well, we are doing so many renovations inside the house, in the kitchen area, and we moved one partition on the first floor. Second floor, as I said, the whole idea is the house, right now the second floor is upstairs, so what we're doing is just extending it all over the garage area. So in that way, we can move the primary bedroom, it used to be here, so we move it to the new extension, and we create an extra bedroom on the side. When we see the exterior elevations, you can see here the, while we are demolition, that's the most of the roof of the garage, and what we are proposing is just extending the wall, like going straight out, so the house is going to be like, we're going to have more like asymmetry of the house, instead of having like a, let's say like a skirt on this side that the house would have to have. We consider that this is going to look way much better, the house in the, like in the neighborhood. As we said, it's an existing, non-conforming condition, and it's just one wall, as the record said, we are not proposing any windows there, that we do is just towards the front, so we are not going to be affecting the neighborhood, the neighbors. That's a short.
Thank you.
Presentation, it's not that much, what we are asking for is just the combined side yards, as I said. But I can show you the, the zoning. So at the, at the building wall, where it's required, the combined side yards, is we have a 35% required, that is 95 or 90, I'm sorry, 33.57 feet of combined side yards, and the existing is 32.9. We are asking to maintain that combined side yard.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, the, the, the construction over the existing building, that existing, the garage, existing building will support a second story? Because a lot of times, a lot of times, that's not the case.
We need to open up the ground to see what is the actual.
Yeah, because you might not have, you might not have the right kind of foundation for, for a second story, okay? So you don't know that, yeah, right, okay. I know that's a building department issue, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, but definitely, we need to, we have to reinforce the, I know what you're saying.
Just a clarifying question, so, and this is a two-car parked garage, right? And how far on that side of the garage is the neighbor's property? The distance?
This is the neighbor's, 12.33 to the side yard, and this is, right now, existing, 16.74, and we are maintaining that 16.74.
So it's 30, 30 feet distance, okay? And without a window on that side, as you mentioned? Got you. Got you, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll put it on the record that there's no one in the audience to ask questions or give comments, so I think we can close the public portion and, oh, are you here to give a comment? I'm so sorry, I thought you were with here, okay, okay. So I think we could close the public portion and move to our own comments. I'm just going to start here by saying that, you know, occasionally we get an application where it's like, the house is literally asking for the work to be done, and I really do think that in this case aesthetically, like, this house needs this done for, you know, for the balance. I think anyone who went out there to, you know, see the house, I think that this is going to be, you know, a tremendous improvement. And actually, when you put it up on the screen like that, where you just do the little flip where, you know, where it just appears, you're like, oh, that's, that's the way it should be. So, you know, I think that this is a, you know, a very reasonable ask, I'd be happy to grant the request, so.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, and I just, the house looks, it's a very pretty house, but it's very out of balance right now on the right side, so, you know, as, as the chairperson says, I mean, this, this house is asking for this application, so I'm fully supportive.
And agree with the comments of my fellow board members, I think this is, this is a good addition, and also I think the variance is very small, so from that perspective too, and plus the distance between the neighbor, adjacent properties also fairly large, so I could be supportive as well.
Just going to echo everything up. Only thing I would add is there's actually a house really close to yours that will be very similar to this, so I think this fits completely in the neighborhood, your modifications are great. Actually, I think the garage was probably added later, if I had to guess, to the original house, because it really does look like, oh, huh, looks like, yeah, so I agree, this is a great application, I'd be in support of it.
I'd just say that the, the neighborhood has several other houses that are basically the same structure, and we may see them coming down the block after they see what, what you've done.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
David Bradford?
Yes.
Sean Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Again, there's no one in the audience to speak on any matters unrelated to, you know, the things that we've discussed at tonight's meeting, so would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we got a second from Regina, all in favor. Great.
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July.
So.